This meeting into order. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Here.
Depeña? Depeña?
Is your meter?
Here, here, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we're hearing.
Yes, here.
Graziano?
Here.
Councilmember Nuttley and Councilmember Lovell and Councilmember Burke will not be in attendance tonight. Mayor Manham?
Here. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands in my nation, in the physical, religious, and justice of our all.
Hey, we already did roll call, we gotta change that tonight. Sunshine Law?
The Sunshine Law pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, known as the Sunshine Law, notice of this meeting was published in the Thursday, December 22nd, 2022, editions of the Belleville Times and the Star Tribune. The Sunshine Law was complied with by adopting and forwarding to the press, posting and filed with the municipal clerk, the annual resolution showing the date, time, and place of each regular meeting. A copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted on the bulletin board here in the municipal building.
Thank you. So I'd just like to welcome everybody to our first meeting in February. It is February 14th. We all know today is Valentine's Day, so we're gonna try and keep this meeting as efficiently as possible. I know Karen has a date, Chief's waiting for his wife, so we're gonna try and meet this go as fast as possible. The first meetings in a month are always our combined conference caucus meetings whereby any council member can put anything on the agenda that they want for discussion, but because of the type of meeting today was, I do not see any on, plus it may be because it was our clerk's first time doing this meeting, and we don't have that light item on the agenda. So for the first meeting in March, we're gonna add council members caucus discussions. And that's it. So that made it very easy. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So next item on our agenda is proclamations. We have several proclamations for the upcoming St. Patrick's Day Parade, so I'm gonna hand it over to my trusted colleague, Mr. Cazarelli, to just announce and introduce the proclamations.
Thank you, Mayor. Even though today is Valentine's Day, it's a little early, but we are gonna celebrate St. Patrick's tonight, a little bit here. The parade this year for Nutley and Belleville is a little early this year, it's on March 4th. So that being said, we have some proclamations for the honorees coming up. As always, the Nutley, even though it's the Nutley St. Patrick's Day Parade, they're always good to Belleville, and they always honor a few Belleville residents, and I think this year, we actually have more Belleville than Nutley, right, Deirdre? So, yeah, that definitely deserves a round of applause. So the first thing I'm gonna do is read proclamation for Stephen Plummer, and then I think we have, yeah, I think we have four people here tonight that are here. So I'll pass it out to my colleagues and let them each read one, and then maybe, Deirdre, you could come up and say a little bit about the parade real quick.
Yeah. This is the great one. Yes, she's the chairman. Mrs. Schubert? She's the chair.
All right, so Officer Stephen Plummer, I see him in the back. Son was very excited to be here tonight. Thank you. So whereas Stephen A. Plummer has been selected by the Nutley Irish American Association as the Police Officer of the Year for the 44th Nutley St. Patrick's Day Parade. Stephen's family emigrated from County Cork, Ireland in the late 1800s and settled in New York and eventually came to New Jersey. Stephen decided to join the New Jersey Army National Guard in 2006, and during his time, he completed two overseas deployments, one to Iraq and one to Somalia, as well as numerous stateside assignments. Stephen, not retired, but even though this says now retired, Stephen is living in Nutley, retired from Belleville, he is now living in Nutley with his wife Mary Kate, a very own parade queen, and their one-year-old son Luca. Stephen graduated the Bergen County Police Academy in 2013 and went on to start his career in the East Orange Police Department, and is now a proud member of the VFW Nutley Post, the American Legion, the Elks Belleville Carney Lodge, McGovern's Association, the Essex County Emerald Society, and many others, including the Belleville Police Department. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and municipal council of the township of Belleville wish to share in celebration of this event and to hereby congratulate Stephen A. Plummer for being named the 2023 Police Officer of the Year by the Nutley Irish American Association. Take a picture, I didn't wear this for nothing. The mayor's gonna read yours.
Resolved by the Municipal Council of Township of Belleville, whereas Francis J. Costinbatter has been selected by the Nutley Irish American Association as the Grand Marshal for the 44th Nutley St. Patrick's Day Parade. And whereas Francis III of Ed and Marie, Ed and Marie's four sons, was born and raised in Belleville when he went on to receive his JD degree from Seton Hall University Law School and LLM degree from New York University Law School of Law, graduate division. And whereas Francis, who had been practicing law in Nutley since 1964, married Priscilla of Maplewood in 1966, and ultimately lived in Milburn where they raised their four children, Jim, Paul, Kate, and Chris. And whereas Francis maintained his Irish thing tradition that consisted of friends getting together with the traditional corned beef and cabbage dinner even after Priscilla was called to her eternal life in 2007 and after the best 41 years of marriage he could ask for. And whereas Francis is presently legal counsel and longtime member of the Nutley Irish Legal Council and past president of the Nutley Chamber of Commerce, past president and trustee of the First Civil Policy Center of New Jersey, life member and past exalted ruler of the Belleville Elks, past president of Nutley Lines and treasurer of the Nutley Lawyers Club. And now, therefore be resolved that the mayor, municipal council, and township of Belleville wish to share in the celebration of this event and do hereby congratulate Francis for being named Grand Marshal by the Nutley Irish American Association and wishes him good health and continued success in his future endeavors.
Come up.
The Deputy Mayor will do the honors.
Resolved by the Municipal Council of Belleville, New Jersey, whereas Joanne Dunleavy has been selected by the Nutley Irish American Association as a 2023 Member of the Year of the 44th Nutley St. Patrick's Day Parade. And whereas Joanne, who is very grateful of her Irish heritage as well as her religious ideas and beliefs that were instilled in her by her parents, was born in Ohio. She then moved to Bloomfield at the age of four, where she went to attend Saint Thomas Grammar School and graduated from the Macklin Conception High School in Montclair. And whereas Joanne met her husband John while working in mutual benefit life insurance and moved to Nutley in 1964 with her three children, Colleen, Michael, and Kathleen. And whereas Joanne retired from the Township of Nutley Public Affairs Health Department after 37 years, and she now volunteers to both church and community organizations to help those in need. And now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and municipal council of the township of Belleville wish to share in celebration of this event and to hereby congratulate Joanne Dunleavy for being named 2023 Member of the Year by the Nutley Irish American Association and wishes her good health and continued success in the future, in our future.
And then finally, we have our Joe McNish, another Belleville guy, born and raised. I'm gonna read him, he had to come up. Whereas Joseph McNish has been selected by the Nutley Irish American Association as the Deputy Grand Marshal of the 44th Nutley St. Patrick's Day Parade. Joe was born and raised in Belleville and tremendously proud of his Irish heritage. He went on to graduate from Belleville High School and married his high school sweetheart, Maria, and they currently reside in Nutley. Joseph started his career in corporate America, working for a global fragrance organization where he served roles as management, travel, distribution, logistics, and administration for 16 years. Now Joseph is the CEO of Advanced Therapy of America, a state-of-the-art therapy center providing speech therapy and occupational therapy to children and adults. He embraces the desire to be a professional that makes a difference and improves the lives of others. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor, municipal council, and the township of Belleville wish to share in the celebration of this event and to hereby congratulate Joseph McNish for being named Deputy Grand Marshal of the Nutley Irish American Association Parade.
So he's lived in Nutley for the last 20 years, but always be a Belleville kid. He probably doesn't remember this, the last time I saw Joe, he was that big, probably in the third or fourth grade.
Number preschool.
That's right, never seen him again.
Now, Deirdre, you wanna come up and say a few words? Deirdre Hollywood is the, was it president or chairwoman, who do you want? Both president and chairwoman of the Nutley Irish Association.
I just wanna thank you, Mayor, and council members, especially you, Councilman Cazarelli, for honoring our dignitaries. It means a lot to be able to bring people before you guys and to have you appreciate them as much as we do. We invite you to our parade on March 4th, we hope you can march with us. 10:00 AM we have a mass at Saint Mary's, which is actually being said by Father Curly, who has Belleville roots as well. And truth be told, my mother lived in Belleville, she grew up in Belleville.
Can you just give us some time, I know 10 o'clock mass, but parade kickoff?
Parade will line up at noon, so be there at noon for lineup, and then it kicks off at 1:00 PM. Goes down Harrison Street and then we-
Starts where? Where's lineup?
At Holy Family Church.
Okay, that's right.
And then it goes down Harrison and then continues down Franklin Avenue to Chestnut Street with the review stand in front of the middle school.
Thank you.
But thank you so much.
All right, we'll see you then. So we'll just give applause for maybe a minute or so to let some of our honorees exit gracefully so they don't have to watch our entire council meeting on Valentine's Day. We'll see you guys in a couple weeks. Bye-bye, congratulations again. I like reading them all, I don't necessarily believe them all. I stole my pen. Okay, next item on the agenda is report of the manager. Manager is to my right, Mr. Manager, please unmute yourself.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Very brief report tonight. I will say that we're finalizing the 2022 Annual Report. That report, I know the council looks forward to, council looks forward to that manager's Annual Report every year, so at the next meeting, and we might even get it up on the website even prior to the next meeting, so we can take a look at some of the numbers, still feeling the effect in certain areas of COVID-19. I do wanna brief the council and certainly members of the public. We met with our department heads and a big group of employees, and we are, we are in total performance of the Daniel Law. And what the Daniel Law is, and it's important as members of the council now and members of the public, is we had a US District Judge who, an attorney appeared before her, and I guess didn't like the turnout of the case, and he actually went to her house, hanged her. Her son and husband answered the door, her son was killed, her husband was seriously injured. And Governor Murphy signed into Daniel Law, and what that does is prevent, it prevents and it gives municipalities, federal, state, county, municipal levels, the ability to redact addresses from members of, that are registered in town, and it also for members of law enforcement and their families. So I just want you to know, if you get a chance, go on the website, take a look at it, because it does impact on some of the OPA requests. So I know we have a lot of residents that file OPA requests, and the Daniel's Law does have an impact and does change a few things. So it's Danielslawredact nj, which is something that I wanted to show it to council.
Okay, that's it?
That's it, I'm always available for questions.
Any questions of the manager for his report? Any questions or issues for the manager in general? I have a few.
Okay, I'm ready.
So, a couple things. I know Councilor Graziano's been on this, we have an ongoing debate, has the light on top of Town Hall been fixed yet?
The clock, the clock.
The clock? The clock? We ordered it, okay, we, the report I got, the report I got was that the motor keeps failing, so we ordered a new motor, so could, the time could be correct as we speak, and maybe tomorrow it might not be correct, but we did order a new motor.
What's the date?
What's the date of your, yes, I did see it right today, it is a little red for Valentine's Day. Next council meeting, we're gonna, I'm sorry, on the, Mr. Clerk, on the first meeting of March, can we put a work session discussion item for fees? Even though we're taking, beginning to take some action on that, but my fee conversation isn't really about that. And then I'd also like to put a second item on for audit findings, and I'm hoping, Mr. Manager, not for the next council meeting, which is only two weeks from now, but for basically a month from now, if you can, I was hand-delivered my budget from 2021, I guess, and we have to look through the recommendations in the back, can we just, not we, can you, I guess? Audit. Can you just go back to the last three or four years or four-year set, and you go to the back, it says recommendations, can we just look at the recommendations, say from 2000, 2001, 1 to 2, 2 to 3? Because I see that there's a lot of repetition, which means I don't think we're addressing stuff from previous years, so if you can just peek at that, and I'll have Albert put that on that for a discussion for the next, 2001, 2021?
2022.
Sorry. 2020 to 2021, and then 2021 to 2022, 2 to 3, 3 to 4. 2 to 3.
I would only recommend the next meeting because our finance officer is able to attend-
You could do it, it's, we're two weeks away, that's fine.
Yeah.
Why don't we do that, then? I was giving him one more time, but-
He won't be at it.
Yeah, that's fine, I know he's been working on it, so we'll do, I know he's already made some strides, but there's a lot of stuff that's been left over. So Albert, instead, we're gonna put on for the next, not the work session, in March, but in-
The work, 2020.
That's it for me, sir.
I'm sorry, I did, because you sparked my mind. When you talked about the clock, Anthony?
Yes.
When you walk up the stairs, I see all kinds of extension cords. I mean, it looks horrible in front of Town Hall where they go up, outside of the building.
You're on the outside of the-
Outside of the building. And with on-hand electricians we have, and I think you can make it more presentable to the community. Yes, it's nice, my personal.
I'm on it. Come to the mayor's office and look at the extension cords that are circled in the balcony, there's a lot. Okay, so next item on the agenda is the report of the mayor. So I always like to talk about a little bit about past events, we had a great anchor program with the Selma Computer's Office. Those who don't know, Selma Computer's Office is in Belleville, however, for the last X amount of years, he has not represented Belleville. However, next year, we actually get him back, which is great, so as a welcome back event, he hosted an anchor program that we shared on social media, we shared on township website as well. We had a lot of residents come out, and they were actually able to help residents. They had members from Treasury there with laptops that were able to directly assist residents right then and there. If there are still residents that are in need, the anchor program does expire supposedly on February 28th, even though I think it may go longer. You can always call Selma Computer's Office, if you don't have your ID, you don't have your PIN, they have a direct line to Treasury to get that information for you. If you try and call Treasury yourself, you'll never get them on the phone. So don't be discouraged, you can call Selma Computer's Office and they can actually assist you directly. Upcoming events that we have on Tuesday, next Tuesday, February 21st, free health screening, it's gonna be done right here from 10:00 AM to 12:00, information on our website. The next council meeting, NJDEP, New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, Green Acres, we're gonna have a public health question about the Great Lawn. We've applied for funding to help acquire that, the Great Lawn, so the township can keep it and keep it as open space, and it's gonna be a public hearing that we have to do, members from the DEP will be on hand. Albert and Anthony, the website still says it's at 5:30, I know that originally it was 5:30, but I think we changed it now to 6:00. Just make sure that somebody sends an update to the website, because there's an entry for 5:30 there, which was originally 5:30, but then it switched to 6:00. We have to update the website. So it's gonna be at 6:00, so basically it'll be right now, two weeks from now, right before the council meeting starts, unless incorporated to the council meeting, it'll be 6:00 right here. Raby's Clinic, Saturday, March 4th, gonna be at the Firehouse, I believe, on Franklin Avenue. Estes County Hazardous Waste, always a good event, it's gonna be Saturday, May 6th, at the county, information's on our website. Also, computer electronics recycling is Saturday, May 20th, information on our website news. You heard the manager talk about Daniel's Law, that's why you may or may have not noticed some different things on our municipal website. Let me just be clear, it's got nothing to do with just Belleville, every single municipality has the same exact instructions, we have to redact or restrict information, certain things, so you'll be seeing some changes going on, especially with links and connections from our website to third-party vendors. I mentioned Selma Computer's Office, well, next week I have a meeting with him, again, he will be representing us come next year, so next week I have a meeting to discuss a few different items with him. Police Department, Take Me Home Program, it's on our township website, is a registration tracking system that helps our law enforcement track seniors, special needs children. If you're a senior, you wanna register, or you're the parent or the caretaker of a senior in Belleville, wanna register them, please make sure we take a peek at that. Alternatives out of street parking is still suspended until spring, and as I always say, check out our library website for some upcoming events. One of those upcoming events is gonna be early March 5th, maybe?
6th.
6th, March 6th, Monday, March 6th, we have Congresswoman Mikey Sherrill, she does represent us now, she's been here five, six times in the past six months alone, so we are honored to have her, along with our commissioner, Carlos Primaris, but really, she's the headliner for a women's event in honor of Women's History Month. You'll see a flyer, social media on that, that's gonna be Monday, March 6th. That's it for my mayor's report. Next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes.
The Combined Conference and Regular Meeting of August 16, 2022. Make a motion?
Make a motion. Is there anybody that can't vote on them all? I haven't missed a meeting, so can we just take them all?
I'll make a motion to-
We're gonna move them all. So let's just track down, let's just start all over again, we have the approval of minutes, there were about 10 different meetings that are here for approvals. I know this might be hard to follow because Naomi's on the phone, but we're gonna move them all in one big batch, so I'd like a consent agenda, so I have a motion to move all the minutes. I'm gonna have the clerk read the dates.
August 16, 2022, Combined Conference and Regular Meeting of September 13, 2022, Regular Meeting of September 27, 2022, Combined Conference and Regular Meeting of October 11, 2022, Regular Meeting of October 25, 2022, Combined Conference and Regular Meeting of November 7, 2022, Regular Meeting of November 22, 2022, Combined Conference and Regular Meeting of December 13, 2022, and Regular Meeting of January 24, 2023.
So I'm gonna entertain a motion to move them all as one big batch?
Motion.
We have a motion made, and second clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Mayor Manham?
Yes. Next item on our agenda is communications.
The Belleville Soccer Association is requesting the use of the high school stadium field for the spring soccer program, which runs from March through June 2023.
So we used to take some action on these, now we just refer them off to Rec Department, correct, Anthony?
That is correct.
Correct, okay. Next.
The Percival Office has received a letter from Marinello, Marinello, PC, with an update on the master plan consistency review of ordinance 3672, also known as 01-23, to adopt the 605-609 Washington Avenue redevelopment plan. And tonight, Dean Donatelli, the Township Development Council, is here to explain the procedure prior to the mayor and council taking any action on this ordinance.
Okay. Thank you on that. Anthony, so I just, we get this Belleville soccer whenever, some year, we forward it off to the Rec Department, a few things have changed since last year, we now, one are starting a rec fee, and we have fees for the facilities as well. So I know in here it been requested, it usually does, to waive any old fees, but I don't know if they're aware that now we actually do have legitimate rental fees for facilities, so if and when that conversation comes up, I'm assuming it's gotta come back to the council to-
I don't think we can move forward, I think I need to reach out and set up a meeting just so everybody, keep everybody on the same page.
Yep, sounds good. Okay, next item on our agenda, a little new agenda, so we're gonna take a little slow for everybody seeing this for the first time like we are, so we have, next item on the agenda is ordinances, this is basically ordinances for first reading, they're now going by ordinances for possible adoption, which I kinda like, never saw that before, but nice. So we have ordinances for possible adoption.
Mayor, Dean Donatelli is here, he was gonna explain the procedure on ordinance 3672 prior to the council taking any action.
Oh, okay, I missed that part. We've only had 30 conversations. Dean, can you just come up and please use the microphone?
Sure. So, good evening, for the record, my name is Dean Donatelli, I'm Special Redevelopment Counsel for the township. As the clerk mentioned, the council received the correspondence from the Planning Board Attorney, Joe Marinello, and that relates to the 605-609 redevelopment plan. As the council's aware, in January, an ordinance was introduced to adopt that redevelopment plan, and under the redevelopment law, that requires, any redevelopment or development ordinance requires a referral to the Planning Board for master plan consistency review. In January, the master plan, master plan consistency review was conducted by the Planning Board. The Planning Board, as indicated in Mr. Marinello's letter, found that the redevelopment plan was, was consistent, or is consistent with the master plan. They also, the Planning Board also made recommendations, which they're entitled to do, relating to parking. The redevelopment plan as introduced does not require specific onsite parking spaces for the commercial units, any commercial units, and the Planning Board's recommendation was that for each commercial unit, that any development there, that there that is proposed, have one onsite parking space. Another recommendation that was made relates to the number of two-bedroom units, which is actually already covered in the redevelopment plan, so I don't think council needs to make a determination on that. So as you know, the ordinance is up for adoption, possible adoption, as the clerk has indicated in the agenda. If the council is going to move forward with the adoption, it has, it has two, really two options, if, if you're going to proceed with accepting the recommendations of the Planning Board, as I just summarized, then you would simply, if that is the choice of the council, approve the redevelopment plan with the recommendations of the Planning Board, or alternatively, that would be by a vote of council, or votes. Alternatively, if the council is going to approve the redevelopment plan without the recommendations of the Planning Board, then you would do so on a vote, to approve it without the recommendations, but the law requires that it be stated on the record and in the minutes as to why the council is not accepting those recommendations. And that's, I just wanted to summarize that from here. And that's, I just wanted to summarize that from here. Any questions? Do you have any?
Thank you, Dean. Okay, so just to step back one second. This is section 10 of our agenda. This is our ordinance for possible adoption. This is the second and final adoption. We, the agenda has now flip-flopped. We used to do first readings and then second readings. Now we're doing ordinances for possible adoption, which is the second reading. And then later on in the agenda, we do the first readings. Just to be clear, everybody. Okay, so we have a ordinance here?
Just read the ordinance.
Are we going to read it?
Okay. So this is ordinance 3672, also as ordinance 0123. This is an ordinance of the mayor and council of the township of Belleville, County of Dixie, New Jersey, adopting the 605-609 Washington Avenue redevelopment area.
Need a motion to open public commenting?
Motion.
We have a motion made in second for opening public commenting. Clerk, call a roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Mayor Malham?
Yes. Okay, we are open for public commenting on this ordinance and this ordinance only. Do we have anybody for public comment? Mr. Frank Dantoni? Can I say please come forward, state your name and address for the record? If you don't mind, sir, just speaking to the microphone.
Good evening, mayor and council. First, I may thank the clerk. At the last meeting, I asked him if he could leave some spaces between items so we could put notes in. And he did so. Thank you, sir. This, if I recall, didn't we declare San Aaron Needham a while back?
Yeah, so this has long been kind of dealt with by the township and by the Planning Board. It kind of got lost in a shuffle. There was a, we had an attorney that was leaving a law firm that had a conflict and it waited. And we just now realized that it was never finalized. So this is not new. This is going back at least a year or so.
All right, did I hear Mr. Donatelli correctly? Did the planning board suggest that no required parking for commercial spaces?
They're opposite.
One required. It's not required in the zone as it is, but they recommended one parking spaces for each commercial, one parking space for each commercial.
They're making it tighter.
All right, we're going to have...
On-site, onsite, one onsite parking space for each commercial.
Not in the street.
On-site.
We definitely, without that project now, I don't know if you drive past it, just with the employees from the motorcycle mall, that entire length from Graylock to Shoprite is parked on the sidewalk and all. So we definitely need parking. We can't allow any more of these developments to get away with parking. No parking, insufficient parking and all that. The other question is, it's about, we go shopping at Shoprite. It's like, let's guess, four to six weeks, construction is stopped there. Is there any reason for that?
That's not the ordinance. That's not the ordinance.
It's, yes.
Construction stopped where?
At that site.
What site?
605, just around the corner.
This is not that site. This is the technical, this is the technical.
Oh, this is the gas station?
Yes.
Oh, all right, well, that wasn't there. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? The droves.
Mayor of Dr. Ross 95 Bell Street. In regards to what I just heard here about one parking spot per commercial unit. I mean, you should be increasing parking, not decreasing. Because in that particular area, my thinking just hit that whole area, there's no parking there. Unless you want to park in the post 105 parking lot, I don't think they would be happy with that. But you're going to, that's going to be a serious parking problem. But let me ask you another question here. It says here in the ordinance, that's to the best interest of the town. That's not the best interest to the town or to the residents in that area. And why do we continue selectively target particular parcels for area redevelopment? Prior to four, five years, if you wanted to put a development up in Belleville, what did you do? You wouldn't, you would be presenting your, you probably heard already, because he's smiling properly, but anyway, because I brought this up at the same board meeting.
Some people called you, Mario, to get an appointment with the mayor.
So anyway, why do you have...
Isn't that how it happened a long time ago?
What happened?
They would call you and you would get them a meeting with the mayor?
Yeah, that's not the way to do it. Let's stick to the subject.
You asked how people got, how people got a development.
The point I'm bringing out is they would go in front of a board years ago, planning, and it would be directed to the planning and zoning board. Why don't we continue doing that? It's going to pass anyway.
You didn't bring that in your brought in Solomon Duett in town hall of you.
Let's not start that because you're going to get yourself in a lot of trouble. I got to tell you that right now. I let you escape by missing it by one day last time, just so you know.
I got you.
Just keep that in mind because I'm not playing games.
That's how things used to happen, right?
So let's talk about business, town businesses. You want to talk to me privately outside?
No.
Okay.
I think the public has the right to know what you did.
Let's stick to the subject.
I think the public got the right to know what you did, so you bring it up.
I'm allowed to ask your question.
You're allowed to speak and comment.
I'm just giving you my opinion here, what I think you should do. Why keep giving spot zoning or whatever you want to call it to everybody except certain people?
I hear you. Solomon Duett being one of them. Anybody else? Sir?
Good evening, Michael Sheldon, 47th Blood Street. Thank you for clarifying for Mr. Frank Dantoni's sake that 605-609 Washington Avenue is the corner gas station. I'm talking about the corner of Washington Avenue and Graylock Parkway. The title for this ordinance is really somewhat misleading, not, it's not totally complete. And I'd like, just for the record, for you to acknowledge that it's just not the gas station on that corner that's involved in this redevelopment plan, which has already gotten ANOR designation, that there's another property involved. And that is the first house next to the gas station on Graylock Parkway. I, I forgot to bring along my copy of the ordinance, but I think it's 172. It's 100, something in the 170s. Can you just put the record, give the address for that?
I don't have the address, but your way. The first house would be to the west of Washington Avenue, up from the gas station. The reason why it's called the 605, because the new development, well, that'll be the address, new development.
So while the council is about to approve the redevelopment plan for this site, obviously, both properties are going to be merged together. Correct me if I'm wrong, when this was heard before the Planning Board, there's still no definitive plan in place. You're just laying the groundwork to allow possible construction, which in all likelihood is going to be another one of these mixed-use residential structures with commercial, retail, and ground floor, and God knows how many. I think during the Planning Board hearing for this, the CME planner was talking about possibly 70 or more units on this site. But again, correct me if I'm wrong, there is no definitive site plan in place at this moment. Mr. Donatelli's here, hopefully he can, he can confirm that. Is that true? There's no, there is no actual construction plan approved for this parcel?
I can clarify a couple of things for you, Mr. Sheldon.
Why don't we get Dean on this side in front of that microphone?
Come on. I want to share the microphone with you. Okay.
We might need you though for more, Dean. So why don't you just...
So, so this is fine. So, Mr. Sheldon, I can, I can clarify for you that the redevelopment plan allows for a maximum of 51 units. And this is all, I'm just, this is all in the, the plan. Just know it because we've been working on it the last few months. It requires one space onsite for each residential unit. So that's 51 onsite parking spaces. It requires one visitor parking spaces for every 10 units. That's a minimum, obviously. It's a maximum of five stories or 65 feet a maximum. So it could, of course, be...
Thank you. So these are just the ground rules, but there's still, there's no actual construction plan?
You're correct. This is like zoning ordinance. But it's slightly different because it has a much more stringent, strict requirement in terms of finishes, quality of the work product, amenity space, for instance, which is one of the...
Thank you.
Thank you. So we can anticipate probably sometime later this year, the actual application to develop this site will be apparently before the Planning Board?
Possible, sure.
All right, okay. That's what I wanted to know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for this ordinance? This ordinance only. Sir?
Hello, my name is Washington Pesantis. I live at 464 Cortlandt Street. I would like to express about these redevelopments. I'm a, I'm a victim of these redevelopments that you started.
So I know who you are. We emailed a couple of times today. You can, you can speak on redevelopment generally in the next portion of the meeting, but this, you have to talk about this particular address. So if you want to talk about what you want to talk about, you could most certainly do so.
I would like to talk about the spaces for parking.
For this ordinance though?
For this ordinance. For all the places.
No, no, no. Right now, it's only this one. But you can definitely share your opinions in a few minutes when we get to that, if you go off this ordinance.
All right, I will share it up.
Yeah, okay, no problem. Anybody else for this ordinance? This ordinance only. Nope, hearing none. I'll, can I motion to close?
I'm going to make a motion to close. Just one question, Dean. I think this actually created about half a dozen off-street parking spots that were blocked by, yeah, seven, that were blocked. That's driveway that's currently going to be additional spots in the street.
Right.
That's not included in any of the numbers, that's just additional off-street parking, right?
The gas station is a corner. It's got multiple curb cuts. Closing up those curb cuts actually makes more parking on the street.
Making parking, okay. Okay, yeah, motion.
Motion to close and...
Move for final adoption.
Okay, so if we close and move for final adoption, we're good.
So we can cross the public and adopt at the same time?
Yes.
With the recommendations by the Planning Board.
Yeah, so we sometimes will do that where we'll close and move for final adoption. Sometimes we'll just close because we want to have discussion and that. But, so yeah, so we're making a motion now to do it all in one time. Close and move for final adoption. So we're closing public commenting and we're voting to approve.
Mayor, excuse me?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify, we're adopting with accepting the modifications from the Planning Board, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, perfect, Dave.
Okay.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
And Mayor Malham?
Yes.
Ordinance 3672, 0123 is approved. Next, we have an ordinance for a possible adoption. This is ordinance 3673, number 02-23. This is an ordinance to amend the revised general ordinance of the township of Belleville. Chapter 8-16 handicap parking spaces.
Need a motion to open public commenting?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion made open public commenting. Clerk, call a roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Mayor Malham?
Yes. Okay, we're open for public commenting on this ordinance, this ordinance only, which is to amend handicap parking spaces. One, yes.
Just very kind. The, where, where are these parking spaces for, it is parking?
I do not have it. Who has it?
All right, well, it don't matter. The point I want to get at is, I don't know if we're, I don't know how we're approving this. I mean, if a person, say a person drives a motorcycle, drives a mountain bike, can carry it out of their basement, mount things in their car, have a good job that requires physical stuff, is that a handicap parking space?
Doesn't appear to be. Does not appear to be.
All right. Well, it is. After the meeting, I'll give you the answers and all that. The other thing, I'm told that these handicap parking spaces, the list is examined every year to see if they're still valid parking spaces. I'm a 30-year member, the Yelks, the building we sold over two years ago, at the time we were granted two parking spaces. They're still there. Nobody's taken the sign down and, and over, we need parking on Washington Avenue.
Those are two handicap parking spaces?
Two handicap spaces that we pleaded with the council years ago and we, we got them. You know, when we were having our parties and meetings there. Now there's two there for over two years.
I think we're making, I think we're making some headway. We have a, I saw it on the town website where the police department put an alert out on letting people know they basically have to requalify and just let the public know. What we do is we vote on the recommendations of police department. Once the resident has a note from their doctor saying that they are handicapped and they go through a somewhat stringent process with the police department, traffic bureau, it comes here for us to vote. We're not personally investigating everything, but we rely on the fact that a doctor gave a, gave a note and the police department has already vetted them. But the chief has a program starting now that we are going to be revetting everybody annually.
I agree, but for you, we were told that was happening.
Can't change the time. All you can do is go follow.
But hopefully tomorrow, somebody can have those two signs so we have two more parks.
Look to your left, the chief is sitting right next to it.
Desperately needed, right? The other thing, my tenant is in Ecuador for a month. I asked the chief if a sign could be, a bed could be put over the sign and put the meter back in for the month.
No, required an ordinance change.
But thank you for trying to raise that additional money.
We need parking, desperate, desperately need parking on Washington Avenue. It's hurting businesses up there. And you hurt us even more by taking away the ability to put coins in the meter.
All right, I need you to stay on this handicap ordinance, sir. Thank you. Anybody else for this ordinance? This ordinance only. Hearing none, seeing none. I'll, can I motion to close and move for final adoption?
Motion, second.
We have a motion made and second to close and move for final adoption.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
And Mayor Malham?
Yes.
Ordinance 3673, 02-23 is adopted.
Next ordinance?
This ordinance is also up for a possible adoption. This is ordinance 3674-0323. This is an ordinance to amend the revised general ordinance of the township of Belleville, chapter 8-2.2, entitled Parking Prohibited at All Times on Certain Streets.
Need a motion to open public commenting?
Second.
We have a motion made in second to open public comment. Clerk, call a roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Mayor Malham?
Yes. Okay. Okay, we're open for public commenting on this ordinance and this ordinance only. If you have a question on this ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, hearing none. I'll, can I motion to close, public commenting, and move for final adoption?
Motion, second.
We have a motion made and second to close and move for final adoption. Clerk, call a roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
And Mayor Malham?
Yes.
Ordinance 36, 3674, 03-23 is adopted.
Thank you.
We have ordinance 04-23. This ordinance is up for a possible adoption also. This is an ordinance authorizing the township execution and delivery of a corrective deed to ONR Urban Renewal Company, LLC, correcting the township previous conveyance or property there to locate within this pool number one redevelopment area.
Thank you. Need a motion to open public commenting?
Motion, second.
We have a motion made and second to open public commenting. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
And Mayor Malmheim?
Yes.
Okay, we're open for public commenting on this ordinance, this ordinance only. If you have a question about this particular ordinance, please come forward. Say your name and address for the record. Mr. Drogge.
John's 95 Belston. I'm just trying to get clarification. I'm reading the ordinance on it. Maybe Mr. Martino can probably answer this. Now, if somebody buys a piece of property, a piece of property was transferred from the Board of Education to the, no, township, the Board of Education to the township, correct? That was for $1. Okay, so now what happens there? Did they just transfer the deed or did they do a meet and bounds description of the property? To, I'm just trying to figure out how it was omitted.
I mean, it's been long, long covered and multiple, multiple public hearings. Maybe Mr.?
I, well, I didn't get, maybe everybody was speaking through the mic.
Summarize it again.
12 years ago, this transaction took place. At the time, there was a meet and bounds description and there was also a lot and block and address in the deed. A meet and bounds description was incorrect. Why that happened, who did, you know, why whoever was there?
I think that's the question I want. Like, who did the meet and bounds description? The surveyor?
Surveyor.
So in other words, okay, now I'm getting an idea. So in other words, when the surveyor did that whole block, he omitted a piece somehow?
He omitted, he omitted, he needed a small section of it about 27 feet by six.
No, no, I see the dimensions, but I'm just trying to imagine because it's the whole city.
It was an error. It was, it was an error. The intention, everybody admitted, including the Board of Ed, that the intention was to transfer the entire block to curb, to curb, to curb. That wasn't done by legal description, so all this does is correct that.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, you should know from real estate that, you know, and was there a title search done on it to make sure it was corrected or? There was none.
It was, again, I wasn't there, nobody at this table was there.
No, I know that, but I'm just saying what normally what you would do. That would be the proper way to do it.
You can't point figures.
No, you don't.
We don't know how it happened.
But if just mine bothered, I had to miss a square block. You know, that's what I'm, I was just trying to figure out.
Square block with multiple lots in it though.
So that they were multiple lots there. That wasn't just one big block.
That's not exactly true. You have to also understand that that, over time, that road got widened. So there was no lot. It was, on our tax map, you'll see that the lot is the entire block, okay? It is not, there's not separate lots delineated in that piece of property from curb to curb and curb to curb. Because there, at times, it could have been, I don't know how long ago, but Rutgers Street was widened and the state took portions of that lot to widen it. In fact, if you go back, I saw, you know, different areas where they took portions, they cut curb lines, they opened it up. Somehow, 12, 13 years ago, when the prior town attorney did this, it wasn't picked up. It wasn't picked up until the redeveloper had to try to then submit, has to submit to the town and actually it was quick check, picked up the discrepancy. And from then, it's been two and a half years to get to this point.
So the original person that purchased it, their attorney missed it too then, you're saying?
I don't know. Again, I'm not pointing fingers. No, no, we're not pointing, we're just assuming. I don't know who did it. Mario, I can't tell you who did it. You're not going to get me to tell you who did it because I don't know who did it.
No, you know why?
If I knew who did it.
If somebody bossed up, I would, I was just hoping to get, the town would get more money, but that little piece of silver, that's the reason I'm bringing it up.
No, because it was the intention of the town. It was the intention of the Board of Ed to transfer it to the township for a dollar. And it was the intention of the township to transfer it to the redeveloper, the same property, the same block.
We literally had this conversation 12 times in the past year.
But we're hoping that the town can make a few dollars on somebody's mistake.
We cannot.
It's simply what I was alluding to.
Mr. Frank Anton.
Mr. Martino, there is someone present who has direct knowledge of that. That's me. For 10, 12 years, I had asked the Board of Education and successfully I and others had stopped the sale of school number one because it was a perfectly viable building. We're using it for, not only the Board of Ed was using it, the town was using it, the police department was using it. We stored all our school buses down there and all. For 10, 12 years, they tried to sell it. They actually sold it one time for $200,000, $2.1 million. But it was a little corrupt deal and I made some calls and that turned out to be a corrupt deal. That didn't happen. But for 10, 12 years, at the time, Mr. Appleton and other administrators could not provide me with a deed. They couldn't find the deed of the property. One day, I'm on jury duty, a judge gave us a two-hour lunch break. I went across the street and researching the deed, there was a young lady there who's a professional deed researcher and wound up in a conversation. And I told her I was looking for, she helped me. The problem, they couldn't find the deed is because everybody was looking for the address of the Board of Ed, 190 Cortlandt Street. The official address of that was 81 Stevens Street. So when we got that, that young lady helped me. And it turns out, it wasn't one property. There was five deeds, four deeds on the property, right? And they're all, one of them, the northwest corner, that piece of property, actually included part of Cortlandt Street and all. And I pleaded with the board not to sell it. I provided them with the deeds at that time. So that's the problem. I don't think it was the surveyor. I think it was that one corner, there was, one of the deeds was on the southeast corner. That was a smaller piece of property. And one of those deeds, it was dedicated, it was donated to the town by the owner at that time. I believe they lived in Montclair, to only be used for recreation. So I fought the Board of Ed for many years. That was an illegal sale to begin with, you know, it was dedicated the same way the corrupt thing of the senior citizen, Jergens Lotion, gave it to the town for recreation and municipal purposes only. And we catered to a developer and we did an illegal thing there. But that's the story of school one. It's not the surveyor. It was at the four different deeds.
Thank you, Mr. Drogge.
And somebody eliminated that. But we should take that property back. There's an opportunity now. And you know, we need it, you know, the Board of Ed improperly is leasing all over town. We're in debt. We're going to be in big debt when these five-year leases expire.
I need you to keep your comments to the deed, sir.
Well, that was at school one. We should take it back. Maybe there's some way an opportunity here now because of this error. We can take that 1.6 acre back.
Thank you. Anybody else for this ordinance, this ordinance only? Mr. Sheldon.
Good evening again. Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. With your vote, in a few moments, certainly we'll approve this redevelopment or this conveyance matter. 11 years of endless legal wranglings are about to come to an end. Just for the record, it's been already hinted upon or touched upon in the last few minutes. This tragedy for our township commenced in December of 2011 when the Board of Ed, at that time, sold the school one block to the town hall for the grand sum of $1.
Mr. Sheldon, you have a question about the deed. This is only about the deed.
Under state law, this statute, Title 40, 492, I have the right to talk about anything that's relevant to this matter, so.
We're only talking about conveying the deed. We're not talking about the deed of what happened 15 years ago.
It's going to take me less than a minute to say what I want to say, right? So please, please stop interrupting me. This property was tragically sold from the Board of Ed to the town hall for $1 December of 2011. A block now that, by the most conservative estimates, is worth at least $10 million. Now, already, the planning board, about a year and a half ago, if I remember correctly, approved the plans, the site plans, to redevelop this block. But they've been stymied because of this particular deed problem. And I just want you to confirm if you can that the already approved plan, the redevelopment plan for this block is now about to go forward. And what that entails, that the planning board agreed to split this block into a roughly one-third, two-thirds ratio. The one-third is the northern part that buffers, that borders Academy Street. The larger section, the one-third, is the southern part that buffers Rutgers Street. And what the plan, the plan involves is that the northern terminus is going to become residential and that the southern part, and Mr. Martino mentioned this just a few moments ago, your still quick check is going to be the developer.
Mr. Sheldon, I need the question to be about the deed. You can talk about that in a few minutes during public commenting. This is only about the deed's conveyance. It's not about the redevelopment plan that the planning board, it's about the deed's conveyance.
Is there going to be any change to the already approved planning board?
That has nothing to do with this ordinance. You could ask that question in a few minutes during public comment.
The reason that the development hasn't taken place yet because?
Not about this ordinance.
The argument over that little sliver of land. So is it going, is it going to go forward as?
I assume it will be, or else we wouldn't be here doing this.
I just wanted to make sure that there was.
Why else would we be doing this if it wasn't for a vote?
I wanted to make sure that the plans that are already approved by the planning board will now get underway as soon as you approve this.
I did not say that, that the developer can do anything he wants. I'm just saying that this is allowing the deed to convey.
To the best of your knowledge, did you already?
That would be the normal chain of regression, I would think.
That's all I wanted to know.
Be obvious though, sir, be obvious.
Nothing's obvious here.
Anybody else for public commenting on this ordinance, this ordinance only? Hearing none, seeing none. Adjutant motion to close and move?
And move for final adoption.
Close and move for final adoption. A motion to close and move for final adoption.
Motion, second.
Yep, okay, a second.
Motion made and second. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
And Mayor Malmheim?
Yes.
Ordinance 04-23 is introduced.
Adopted.
Adopted. I'm sorry, adopted.
Okay, so the next section of our agenda is the ordinance for introduction. This is the old ordinance for first reading that used to appear first in our agenda. Ordinance number one for introduction.
Ordinance 05-23. This is an ordinance of the mayor and council of the township of Belleville, County of Essex, New Jersey, adopting the school number one redevelopment plan concerning 81 Stevens Street, block 9403, and lot one.
Need a motion to introduce?
Motion, second.
Motion made and second to introduce. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
And Mayor Malmheim?
Yes.
Ordinance number two for introduction. Or I should say ordinance 06-23 for introduction. We're all learning today.
This is an ordinance creating a chapter of 37 entitled Feeds.
Make a motion for introduction.
We have a motion made and second for introduction. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
And Mayor Malmheim?
Yes.
Ordinance introduced.
We have ordinance on the table.
We're not seeing any actions, so I'll just start there, just get right over it. Okay, the next item on our agenda is number 11, which is public comment. I'm going to adjutant a motion just a second to open for public commenting. Once we do, residents have five minutes to speak. I ask that they please come forward, state your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to speak and what we all believe is township business, that would be wonderful to get that done this time. So without further ado, can I have a motion to open up for public comment?
Motion, second.
We have a motion made and second to open for public commenting. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
And Mayor Malmheim?
Yes.
Okay, sir. Yep, now would be your time. That's right. So just please give us your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to speak on whatever it is.
Okay, my name is Washington Pesantis. 464 Cortlandt Street. The issues I have, I was living at 381 Cortlandt Street when the town adopted the redevelopment of 91 Terry Street and the four corridor between Jerralemont Street and Cortlandt Street. So I used to be the caretaker of that land. The land was, I believe, almost 2. something acres for the last 22 years. Little by little, I was pushed back. I was pushed back by the redevelopment, Dennis McNeil, which is, which is really hard to talk to him and he's always. I was living at the last time at 419-417 Cortlandt Street, which belongs to the same property. So recently, two months ago, he has told us, me and my family, that we had to move because he's going to do an eviction for us. I said, why don't you sell the property to us? I've been living here for the last 22 years and I have a relationship with Jinsing Up. I know the Reverend Moon is the owner. I'm a church member of that religion and that's why I was so long with them. But suddenly, they never, they never talked to me. They never talked to me. They never give me any, any opportunity even to make an offer on the house that I can keep my family there and continue living there with my kids and send them to college. And I can afford it because I'm the only one who work in my home. My wife just take care of the kids and take care of the things in the house. And right now, it's been really hard for me because I ended up renting down the street in a little two-bedroom apartment, which no, I don't have a parking. I don't have a laundry, nothing. And that little house we had, I had everything. I had a parking, I had laundry. And I thought it was a fixer-up because they never put any, a dime in the property, even a dollar. I was the one buying some used stuff, even the water heater, whatever. Before, I was responsible for all the property, cutting the grass, everything for these 22 years. And I feel it's not fair that Dennis McNeil couldn't give me a chance even to make an offer in the house and buy it from them. Since he got a great deal, he got a great deal from the town. He got a good tax break. He got a really good deal with Jinsing Up, $100,000 for the whole land. And then they were partnership and they're going to split the profit once the apartments are left. He didn't offer me even an apartment that I can keep paying the rent and the development. And I feel it's really unfair for my family and for myself. I'm an immigrant from Ecuador. I've been living here since 1989. I came to Belleville, 2000, and since then, I've been, I've been taking care of this place. And the people at the higher up of the church, they don't care about the land. They don't care about this place because they never put a food in Belleville. They all the way down in Massachusetts, the Muslim Massachussetts. And they don't have a connection with the land. So I feel it was really unfair for our family to be pushed out from 381 Cortlandt Street and they demolished. And they give me this other little place over there. And now we also forced out from there. I proposed, please let me buy the little house. Let me make an offer. Like, you had a good chance with the town. You guys had a good chance to put these buildings here. Why, why, why you cannot give that chance to my family? So that's what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comment. We, as you know, sir, we've communicated a couple of times today via email. So I appreciate you being here to share your story with us. Anybody else? Mr. Frank Anton.
I wasn't going to speak about that, but I just wanted to back this gentleman up. This is a perfect example how all this development is harming the good citizens of Belleville, longtime residents of this town. The developer stood right here with his famous attorney, Mr. Casarelli, and he stated he wanted to build a 91 Terry Street, which surprised everybody in office because we know it's a short street, 156 units. Those were his words. Then we got the transcript. Right here, he wanted to build at a workshop before the town meeting. Then what happened? He said, when it actually came up, he was only going to build 115 units and because the eight or nine houses there, he felt sorry for those people and he wasn't going to touch their houses, all right? When I saw the plans, what I did, I did a takeoff of it, measured his. They go along the railroad tracks, it comes along Home Street and Parkway like a J. 115 units. If you took the square footage like I did and divided it, he took, he was gonna take everybody else's house, and they are at a hundred and fifty-six units. And that's where he's doing this. This poor gentleman is there thirty years, took care of all the properties for the guys, he did work on all the properties, and now him and his family are being kicked out. And he's gonna come back to you for the rest of the other forty-one units. He wants, he, one by one, he's taking all them houses there. So they come before, they testify under oath, they don't tell the truth. But in the end, this is how it hurts the good people of Bellevue who work hard. And, and you know, this is not a high-income community. You know, you could try to make it a high-income community, but you're hurting the longtime residents and citizens of this town. So, I hope you do something for the man because the developer made promises to those people, and there's two other property owners which he's hurting, which have come to me. I don't wanna, they didn't wanna come here tonight, but, so I'm not gonna bring them up. What I do wanna address is, now last week in Lidl's, a woman conducted... You're a laundry guy, right? Yeah, I can't come to your place no more, man. What the H is the town doing? She says, "I can't put money in the meters." I says, "Yeah, a couple months ago, they put brand-new meters in. It takes everything, coins, credit cards, everything." "No, it don't, no, it don't, the hole's not there no more." So after I left, I went back and went and looked, and sure enough, you got them blocked. It only takes credit cards. This is obscene, just three o'clock this afternoon, another one of my customers yelling about, "What's going on with this here? You got people at a restaurant next door, they wanna come for the fifteen minutes to, to pick up an, an order, and they gotta put on their credit card." And then, you try, like this one girl today, she said, "And then they charging me a fee?" There's an, beside the quarters you gotta put in, there's an additional fee. I don't know what, what that is, I guess we're using a credit card. This is insane. Like I said, this is a medium, the low-income family. If people wanna come in and put, you gotta put a credit card in for a quarter, or fifty cents, or seventy-five cents? So, I'm begging the council, I don't know who approved this, I should think, because you've got fee schedules all the time, that come before the council.
The fees do, yes.
Who, right, so who ordered this?
That was, I'm assuming a township.
I was thankful that you people, listen to some people, me and my wife specifically, because we didn't want those muni meters where you had to walk a half a block to pay. So you put the kind of meters that we were happy with, which take everything and all that. And now, only credit cards, says on the meter. So I hope we can reverse this and, and go back, and these people, they wanna come. And, and look, today was a busy day, the guy in the corner selling balloons and all for... These people aren't there for a few minutes, they gotta put a credit card in for, so, please, thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, I think council members, if they wanna be a council member, they should show up in perfect. Oklahoma, the Open Public Meetings Act said the public has the right to see the discussion, the dialogue, and the thought processes of governing officials.
Thank you, sir.
They're not here, they should be here, if not, they should resign.
Thank you. I'm told that the, it was a recommendation of our CFO with the change.
And the banks and employees handling...
Employees handling cash and money, even inside town hall, we no longer accept cash. Also, we had a major problem with banks who do not wanna accept coins, especially if they're a little wet, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot doing that, and I know... In the end of the day, it was the CFO's decision.
I deal with coins and banks take mine, and some of them are dirty, I agree with, you take care of that.
I understand.
That's my business, all money.
I understand. Anybody else in public comment? True.
Same thing, Matt, real twelve ninety-five. Are we doing Black History Month this week, this year, this month rather, in Bellevue? Yes. Okay, don't forget, there's a, an incident that happened, which nationalized, is that Ty Ray Nicholas, and I hope, you know, something to be said good about him because the tragedy that he incurred. Going back to rec fees, for some reason, after the last meeting, you guys were talking about it. And I remember something, it must have been a good twenty years ago or something, with Bobby Giudano was the town attorney. When we were on council, they, we were attempting to do the same thing. For some reason, if I recall correctly, I'm like ninety-nine, three-quarter percent sure, he said that charging fees for recreation was illegal, all the towns. He was saying, telling us that the towns were illegally charged. And I don't know how true that is, but that seems to stick in my head. He said, "We're not violating the law of Bellevue, but I'm charging that everybody else is." So it's just something to think about because I still remember that ruling that he gave us, why he wouldn't let us charge, that's going back a while. And just so you know, I would hope that besides today, the mics are pretty good, and I would hope you would extend this comment to the rest of the boards, letting them know to use the mics because they're very difficult to hear, especially at the last planning board meeting. You know, if there isn't ADA compliance, it, do not adhere to it. Did the water rate go up?
Did it ticked up? Yep.
It did go up. Is there a minimum that you, whether you use water, say you don't use any water?
It's been that way for decades.
No, no, I'm just reconfirming, yes. Now, is there two, is there a different rate for residential and commercial? Yes. I think, okay, I just wanna confirm, because I was looking up at the water bills. I noticed that some people have, like every month they get billed, or...
Commercial.
Commercial.
Commercial, guess, every month, and then they pay every three months, right?
No.
No.
No, they just pay it every month? And they, they have the minimum too?
Yes, their minimum's higher than the residential.
Yeah, I was trying to, because I was looking, I seen quarterly bills, then I see monthly, so I was just trying to figure out what was the difference between if they pay quarterly or they pay every month. Just be one word item here. Whose idea was this to change the format of the agenda the way it is today? Whose idea was this? So one person...
I think it was Mr. Frantatoni's, actually. He had a recommendation to change it.
No, just to wait, I'm just saying, for, for thirty years, as far as I know, we always had it the old way. But who recommended it to be in this format?
Assuming our new clerk, this is the format he's comfortable with.
Okay. Why, why can't we adhere to the old agenda, would you hold out that?
Sometimes it's not a bad idea to move on, Mario.
No, no, let me ask you a question, because it is a pain. And because first of all, the council controls the manager, clerk, hires the attorney.
As you know, we don't dictate to our employees.
No, but that's, the clerk is the secretary to governing body, correct?
I don't hear any of that here complaining about it, so therefore, I'm assuming he's good to continue.
But I'm just saying, I just would hope you could change the format to where...
I'm okay with it.
Also, let's forget about the format, to have the resolutions available, even though you said it was illegal or whatever your per word, I'm not voting...
Never said it was illegal, Mario.
Not illegal, it's never. Or you, you, you want it for or something?
Ask me if we were required to, and I told you no, that's exactly what I said.
Okay, well, well, that's what I'm answering, because I'm, I don't remember what you said, because last meeting, you weren't properly using the microphone, so it is, was difficult to hear. So that's why I'm just reaffirming what was saying. So why can't we have it available like other towns do? Why can't we?
Not every town does, most towns that I've checked don't. When you were mayor and you were on the council, you did not. Prior to me, Mayor Kimball did not. I think we as a township, as a, as an administration now, we have work sessions, we have discussions, we have caucuses, we live stream our council meetings. I think we're probably the most transparent that, that's been, including your time here, Mario, and, and even the former mayor. There's a lot of towns that don't do it.
But all I'm saying is, well, but don't forget, let's, let's take, even when you were on the county council, the technology was...
You have thirty seconds.
I still got time. Uh, the technology wasn't there, so it is, but now everybody's on the internet and everything.
Long as there's a website, Mario, you can put up a PDF, whether it's today or twenty years ago.
Hey, well, I wasn't tech savvy back then, I'm still not. But I'm just saying, it is so much easier to look at the resol, like here, resolutionized the last item.
There you are.
Let me stop myself. Besides, the other guy had six minutes, I timed him. Um, the location, I, what is the location of the cannabis? You mean, tell me you can't answer that on the resolutions?
Nobody said we can't answer, Mario, I'm truly a public commentator.
Okay, can you tell me where the location of the cannabis?
Ralph or Stevens.
That's all?
I think it's Ralph or Stevens. It's in a warehouse, Ralph or Stevens.
Oh, it's the warehouse, oh, okay, I already know the location, that's all I need, thank you.
Anybody else in public comment? Mr. Sheldon?
Do you think again, Michael Sheldon, forty-seventh Place Street? I'd like, if at all possible, if Mr. Iaccone can give us an update on the status of this year's budget. I, I have the local finance notice calendar here. Once again, municipal budgets are required to be introduced by March thirty-first or the next regularly scheduled meeting thereafter. So in a few moments, when I'm back in my seat, if Mr. Iaccone can give us an update on that. I wasn't here at the last council, I mean, I couldn't attend, but I did watch the video. There was a very spirited discussion with Mario, Carmella Fleishman, and Mr. Martino about the agenda situation. We had, the last, at least the last year, with the iCompass system, the, the agenda package had been made available, and Mr. Graziano, mostly spearheads these, these initiatives. And we were all very pleased that there was full openness and transparency. But with the departure of Ms. Cavanagh, now seems that we've taken steps backward. We're no longer, the iCompass system is no longer being utilized. A month ago, there was some quick discussion that you might be transitioning to a new system. Perhaps when I get my map back, maybe, see, Mr. Graziano can discuss if he wants to, if you're moving to a new system such as Board Docs, we have, the town has been using iCompass. But out of curiosity, I did a quick check of, of how our sister communities conduct their meetings and what they provide. So, I wanna write down the list very quickly. First of all, meeting start times. Loomfield starts at seven, Caldwell starts at seven fifteen, Cedar Grove starts at seven, Essex Fells starts at seven, Fairfield starts at seven, Glen Ridge starts at seven thirty, Irvington starts at seven thirty, Livingston starts at seven, Maplewood starts at seven thirty, Milburn starts at seven, Montclair starts at seven, North Caldwell starts at six thirty, Nutley starts at seven, Orange starts at seven, Rosen starts at seven, South Orange at seven thirty, Verona at seven o'clock, Carney at seven, Arlington at seven. Almost every community around us starts at seven or seven thirty. Why do they do that? Because they want their residents to be able to attend. They're cognizant of the fact that most people are working, they're on their way home at five o'clock. It usually takes the better part of an hour to get home, don't interrupt me.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you a question, and maybe you can answer.
Then close the clock, stop the clock.
How many of those communities live stream their meetings and allow for residents to call in?
I can give you that, that information.
And continue.
So, the preponderance of communities starts, start at seven or seven thirty. We're the only one that starts at six o'clock. And there's only one explanation for that, is because you don't want to accommodate residents. You want as few people as possible in this audience so that the opposition, any complaints are minimized.
Which is why I started live streaming our meetings on our website and social media channels.
That's not the same as having people physically here to confront you. Now, I also look to see the same communities, who provides full agenda package before their meetings? So, let me again run down the list. Loomfield provides a full agenda packet, Caldwell full, Glen Ridge full, Livingston full, Maplewood full, Milburn full, Montclair full, Newark almost a full, Nutley full, Orange full, Rosen almost a full agenda, South Orange full, Verona full, West Orange full, Lynnhurst full. And interestingly enough, Mr. Cabrera comes to us after spending nearly fifteen years in Gutterburg, and Gutterburg uses Board Docs to provide the full agenda. So again, almost every community around us is providing the full agenda packet with full statements of resolutions, ordinances, et cetera, doing so days in advance of a council meeting, so there's full openness and transparency. You have no excuse to deny us this information. You want to, everyone, you multiply, claim that you're the most open and transparent government ever in the history of New Jersey, and that you're the, you lead by example. That, that is blatantly false. Just by this information, I'm gonna post, I've already posted this on Facebook, but you, this is obscene. You are the most backward, restrictive municipal government in all of Essex County. Now...
I'll have more time for you.
I only have forty-six.
I'm gonna add a few more seconds, so that, that would be Mayor Kimball's administration was also backwards because they didn't provide this information, correct?
The availability of digital online platforms only has become available in the last few years. There was never any...
It was a matter of five years ago.
It all, this, work on, diligent, diligence has only become available in the last few years. So, got forty-three seconds left. Now, through the grapevine, there have been rumors from sources that you and others are considering changing our municipal form of government from the council manager form to the mayor council form, which would essentially then give you total control over all hires. I, later on, I'd like you to either confirm or deny that. Now lastly, I only have a few seconds left. I know this chief Minikini's in the audience here. I'd like the chief to just to confirm, in New Jersey, state law, vehicles have, have license plates in both the front and the rear of the cars, is that correct, right? Yeah, I'm glad to know, and, and the law applies uniformly to everybody in Bellevue, right? No one has exceptions to that rule. All right, so, then...
Is that your time, or Mr. Sheldon, that's his time?
Yeah, I'm gonna give you pictures here. This is the mayor's car, which is currently parked on the side of the building just out here. He only has a rear license plate. So at the end of this evening, either you or one of your officers, I'd like you to accompany me so I can watch you put a hundred-dollar ticket on his vehicle. And I not only want to see that, I'm gonna have, I'd ask any interested members of the community to accompany us to see you take it.
Thank you, Mr. Sheldon, you're out of time.
And it's not gonna crack you with this court system.
Thank you.
You don't tell me, I'll, I'll look at this. It is violation.
You're out of time, sir. Sir, I need you to address the chair, you're out of time. Anybody else in public comment? Ms. Fleishman?
Carmella Fleishman, thirty-three Main Street. First of all, happy Valentine's Day.
Happy Valentine's Day.
I'm a perfectly remembered. So, apparently, I caused, ooh, such a little ruckus with that little question last meeting, didn't I? Fun. Okay, in regards to this agenda, all the things. Now, I understand you don't have to do it legally, you do not have to put the full agenda online or make it accessible to the public, correct?
Correct.
Okay, now, after Sheldon wrote, you know, listed all those towns, wouldn't it have been...
Did you independently vet any of those towns? Because Gutterburg does not do their agenda.
Okay.
And neither does Loomfield.
Neither does Loomfield.
Okay, time, okay. Okay, now, no, I did not. But if there are other towns, regardless of who they are, doing that, putting them out for the public to see a couple of days beforehand, wouldn't that be a better idea for this town? Again, digital technology and all that loveliness.
Keep in mind that the, the agenda does go out on Friday, and ordinances for a second hearing are published. So the ordinances for a second hearing are published, where the, where the public can see them.
Where are they published in legal boards?
They're published locally in the bulletin board, they're also published in, in, we do newspapers.
Yeah.
It's, it's in newspapers and it's bulletin board.
Yeah, there's one I do. Okay, newspapers and bulletin, okay. Are they available to see on the website?
On, probably the newspaper website.
No, no, town website.
Town, I don't believe so, no.
That would be a suggestion.
Okay, that's a great suggestion. I mean, I understand your point, so just understand our point, that, and the attorney made this point, that these are draft documents. So let, let's just assume that by Friday, we have a resolution that's going on to potentially acquire something, okay? And then council members get the packet over the weekend, most of us look at it, not all of us, most of us look at it. And then they call the manager, they call the chief, they call the clerk and say, "Oh, it's not good, it's a good idea, it comes off." Meanwhile, we get out all these different people running around all kinds of towns saying that we're gonna do something that we're actually not gonna do because it's a draft document.
Right, okay.
That's the point, though.
No, okay, point is, if you put it up there, all you have to do is very simple. Document to change at any given moment. When, when I used to go, when I, when my dad took me to wrestling, you know, in, in MHD one year, okay? Cards subject to change, always, you never know, you know, Seabrook would show up, whatever, okay? Cards subject to change, agenda subject to change. I'm not saying you have to print five thousand copies, because obviously, that's paper waste, ink waste and all that, and we're trying to get away from paper and things like that, okay? Suggestion would be to make it available, because when you get the agenda packet on Friday, you say, okay, we're, you know, the councilman reads it over, okay? So give us the same opportunity, give us the weekend.
You don't have a vote on it, so there, I think the thought, the thought is to put something out there that then people, and unfortunately, Bellevue's a little different than many other towns out there, that then take a little bit of information and then run all over the place with it when it might be something that we might not even be taking action on, it's just not worth it, I don't think.
Okay, that is your opinion, because of the fact, again...
Because I live it every day of misinformation that's out there, and rumors, and innuendos, and everything that's out there. That's why...
Welcome to the mayorship, then, good for you, then.
I embrace it.
Okay, so, as, like I said, as the suggestion, and just say, look, explain to the people what they are. Just say, look, kids, it's a draft document. We may be taking action, we may not be taking action. I'm not asking you to print the paper, I'm not asking you to waste the paper and waste the ink. I'm just asking you to put it all on the town website. Everybody's saying, "Oh, town website, town website." Great, town website's wonderful. Let it be available. And then, maybe you wouldn't get the snarky us comments that you, that sometimes.
Abstolgeto, abstolgeto. The Board of Education does not do it, a lot of municipalities don't do it, we're not the only one here.
No, I understand you're not the only one, but y'all keep saying that, oh, technology is great, technology is wonderful. Prove it, put your money where you're...
We live stream the council meetings, we offer a telephone line to call into.
I understand that.
We've done more in the realm of transparency than any other administration in the history of this township.
We're in twenty-twenty-three, everything is...
Draft documents are not public documents. It would be detrimental, I think, to put draft documents out there. We do put ordinances for a second reading out.
Okay, and like you said, that will be on the website for the second, for the, for the second reading?
Yeah, ordinances for a second reading are published. They're either on the bulletin board or published in the legal ad in newspaper.
Right, and that will be going on the website? Yes?
I, I don't know, I don't know anything about it.
Okay, no, I'm asking, can that be put on the website? The second, fine, you don't wanna put your first, your first drafts on there, fine. What about the second drafts?
So I think that the clerk, and it was actually stated that he uses a different software. So we've let him, we're letting iCompass go away. The clerk has already been on a, on a meeting, on Zoom, I think the manager was, I was invited to it, for Board Docs, which is the document, what he's familiar with. But we'll see what options are there, and then we'll take, we'll take...
So at the next meeting, we... So at the next meeting, we will have an answer?
Maybe not, but we're going to get an answer soon.
I'll give you a month.
You can ask again in a month. You can ask next meeting if you want. But if you need to wrap up, you're out of time.
Um, because we were chatting.
Even though it's Valentine's Day, I gave you extra 30 seconds.
Couple of, couple of things, couple of things. Okay. Chief, pass by this today, on Union and Gerald. There's the apartment building on the corner. Can somebody look into getting a spot for a medical van? There's a medical van that picks a resident up in that building every day because we pass it every day. And sometimes the van can pull in because there's an open spot, and sometimes he's kind of in the middle of Drummond Street. So if we can look into it.
Someone, whoever is utilizing that van would need to go and petition for that.
Okay, that sounds dope. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for a public comment? Hearing none, seeing none. Any motion to close public commenting?
Motion.
Well, second.
We have a motion made in second to close public commenting. Clerk call a roll.
Councilmember Cosaroli?
Yes.
De Penya?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Anybody?
Yeah, I want to pull I.
Hearing none, I.
Pull I.
Okay, and let's pull H as well. Good. Anybody else? No. Entertained a motion to move the consent agenda. I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion made in second for the consent agenda. Clerk call a roll.
Councilmember Cosaroli?
Yes.
De Penya?
Yes.
Rosiano?
This is from H, consent, yeah.
Yes, as amended, by removing H, I.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Uh, and Mayor Mahan?
Yes. Okay, H, so as you heard probably in our last council meeting, we, during discussions, we talked about potentially naming the roadway, access road into Municipal Stadium Complex off Millen Avenue in the memory of Danny Rafferty, a young man from a big, long, belligerent family that lost his life recently. He was also a employee of our recreation department. He was passionate about our rec department, he was great with the kids, great, just a great guy all around, who loved his job in the rec department. We lost him way too soon. It was a tragedy for this township and certainly the family. So finally, after much conversations and debating, not debating pros and cons, but just details, we finally have a resolution on board. So I look forward to probably when things get a little warmer, actually have a little ceremony up at the stadium complex for Dan. That's all I want to say. Entertaining motion to move it?
Motion, second.
We have a motion. Motion made in second to move it. Clerk call a roll.
Councilmember Cosaroli?
Yes.
De Penya?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
And Mayor Mahan?
Yes. Next item, I. Councilman Graziano?
Yes, I pulled that for a reason. I, I, even though as a council member, I do support our, the decision we made so far, this is not a place for this building to be done there. So I just wanted to let you know that. We've had this conversation and just letting you know.
Yeah. So that, I just want the public to know, that would be councilman's opinion.
Opinion.
We do have a zoning certificate from the zoning officer saying it's permitted to go there, but in his, in his opinion, he's not happy with that location. Just want to clarify that.
Correct.
Zoning wise, it's okay, but that's his opinion. Okay, I need a motion to move it?
Motion.
We have a motion?
Second.
And second. Clerk call a roll.
Councilmember Cosaroli?
Yes.
De Penya?
Yes.
Rosiano?
No.
And Mayor Mahan?
Yes. Next item on our agenda is new business. So I guess I'll explain. No, actually, I'm not going to explain. Deputy Mayor, can you take it?
Okay.
Steve, how about Steve?
Steve, hey, how's it?
I put you on the spot.
I put you on the spot without even realizing it.
Well, just, just, these are, to correct number errors, actually, in the previous resolutions. Prior numbers were incorrect. The license numbers were incorrect. And as a result of that, the ABC is requiring the township to amend prior past resolutions to make the retail consumption license numbers correct.
Make a motion, second.
Operating illegally.
You, you, just call for a roll, Tom.
I'm sorry, yeah, call for a roll.
Councilmember Cosaroli?
Yes.
De Penya?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
And Mayor Mahan?
Same.
Okay, I am beige.
No, that was it, well, oh, you guys only did it. They moved together, you moved together, okay.
Right, we only did.
Yeah, no.
No?
Was it moved together or not moved together?
No.
It's not, so, Tom, call a.
Make a motion for Resolution 45225.
Second. Call a roll.
Councilmember Cosaroli?
Yes.
De Penya?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
And Mayor Mahan?
Yeah, abstain. Almost.
Almost.
So mad.
Almost. Next meeting, I could, I could vote on legalizing. Do we have?
Executive.
Executive session. You have motion?
You keep in there? Just do that down there. Want for next meeting?
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay, so in two seconds, everybody, I'm entertaining motion to go into executive session. Once we do, we have to clear the room. While we're in executive session, no action will be taken. When we exit executive session, the meeting will be open to the public again. However, that will only be for a motion to adjourn. No action will be taken after the executive session either. So if you want to leave, you can. You want to wait in the hallway for it to come back in when we're done, you most certainly may do so. So I need a motion to go into executive session.
Motion, second.
We have a motion made in second for executive session. Clerk call a roll.
Councilmember Cosaroli?
Yes.
De Penya?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
And Mayor Mahan?
Yes.